All right, good afternoon and welcome to the Standing Committee's meeting for Thursday, May 29th, 2025. All council meetings will be livestreamed on the city's website and our guest speaker is joining us at the table. Please do not turn your microphones off. Our first order of business is roll call. Will the clerk please take the roll?
Mr. Sharland.
Here.
Mr. Coghill.
Here.
Ms. Gross. Mr. Lavelle. Mr. Mosley. Mrs. Kail Smith. Mrs. Warwick.
Here.
Mr. Wilson.
Here.
Mrs. Strasburger Chair.
Here.
Six members present.
Thank you. Our next order of business is public comment. I would like to remind all speakers that the rules of council state that comments are limited to matters of concern, official action, or deliberation which are or may be before City Council in profanity will not be permitted. Please state your name and neighborhood for the record. You will have three minutes to speak. And our first registered speaker, we do not have any registered speakers, so we will now take comments from those in the audience wishing to speak. You may approach the podium.
There are no speakers.
Seeing no speakers who are approaching the podium, we will now move on to our Standing Committee's agenda. Our first committee is the Finance and Law Committee and we have new paper, Bill 1849.
Bill 1849, Resolution Authorizing the Issuance of a Warrant in Favor of Cohen Law Group for Expert Legal Services in Connection with a Litigation Matter for an Amount Not to Exceed $8,247.80 Over One Year.
Second.
Seeing none, all those in favor of Bill 1849, please indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Affirmative recommendation. That moves us on to invoices. Is there a motion on invoices?
Motion to approve.
Second.
Discussion. Seeing none, all those in favor of invoices, please indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Invoices are approved. That moves us on to P cards. Is there a motion on P cards?
So moved.
Second.
Discussion. Seeing none, all those in favor of P cards, please indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. P cards are approved. That moves us on to Public Safety and Wellness Committee chaired by Councilman Coghill. We have a deferred paper, Bill 1531.
Bill 1531, Resolution Authorizing the Mayor and the Director of the Department of Public Safety to Enter into a Clinical Affiliation Agreement with Community College of Allegheny County to Enact a Precepting Program Allowing Students to Learn Professional Skills from City Employees in the Bureau of Emergency Medical Services for Training and Educational Purposes at Zero Cost to the City.
I have a request to hold for three weeks, please.
Second.
Motion to hold for three weeks and a second. Is there any discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor of a three-week hold for Bill 1531, please indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Bill will be held for three weeks. Now that moves us on to new papers, Bill 1846.
Bill 1846, Resolution Authorizing the Mayor and the Director of Public Safety to Enter into an Emergency Services Provider Agreement or Agreements with the University of Pittsburgh Medical Center and Vitalent at No Cost to the City for Professional Services Related to the Stocking and Use of Emergency Medical Supplies for Blood Transfusions on City Emergency Medical Services Vehicles at No Cost to the City.
Motion to approve.
Second.
Seeing none, all those in favor of Bill 1846, please indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Affirmative recommendation. That moves us on to Public Works and Infrastructure Committee chaired by Councilmember Warwick.
New papers, Bill 1850, Resolution Amending Resolution 467 of 2022, titled Resolution Authorizing the Mayor and Director of the Department of Mobility and Infrastructure to Apply for a Grant from the Pennsylvania Department of Community and Economic Development's Multimodal Transportation Fund for the South 21st Street Complete Green Street Project and Further Providing for an Agreement and Expenditures Not to Exceed $1,036,422 to Decrease the Grant Amount, Accept the Grant Award, and Authorize Necessary Expenditures.
Motion to approve.
Second.
Discussion.
Discussion. That was Councilperson Sharland.
Yes. So this is in my district and I can't say I know exactly what we're doing. I know this project well, but I don't know what's happening with the grant here, so.
Good afternoon. Jeff Skeliken, Deputy Director for DOMI. So what this legislation is for is we applied for a grant for $1.1 million. We were actually awarded $250,000 of that grant. So this legislation is to accept that $250,000.
Okay, but this was, it says Resolution of 2022. Is this old money?
It's an old, so we went in 2022 for the resolution to go after the grant.
Gotcha. And this is what we ultimately received.
Correct.
So this is in addition to the other DCD money that we have for this project. Okay.
Yeah, we're going to do this in-house. Our planning department's going to plan it out and design it in-house and hopefully we'll have it out for our 2026 construction season.
Perfect. Awesome. Well, that was what I was curious about. Thanks for being here.
Yep.
Thank you. Further discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor of Bill 1850, please indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Affirmative recommendation. That moves us on to Land Use and Economic Development Committee chaired by Councilman Wilson.
Deferred Papers, Bill 1770, Ordinance Supplementing the Pittsburgh City Code Title 6, Conduct, Article 1, Regulated Rights and Actions, Chapter 609, Weeds and Grass by Creating a New Section 609.08, Managed Natural Landscapes, to Allow for the Planting and Maintenance of Managed Natural Landscapes by Residents.
I defer to the bill sponsor.
Second.
I'm sorry, was there a motion?
Apologies, my mic was off. Motion to hold for two weeks?
Motion to hold for two weeks.
Second.
And a second. Seeing none, all those in favor of a two-week hold on Bill 1770, please indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Bill will be held. That moves us to Bill 1771.
Bill 1771, Ordinance Amending the Pittsburgh City Code Title 10, Building, Chapter 1004, International Property Maintenance Code Adoption, Section 1004.02, Changes Specified to Allow for the Planting and Maintenance of Managed Natural Landscapes by Residents.
Motion to hold for two weeks?
Second.
Discussion. Seeing none, all those in favor of a two-week hold, please indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Bill will be held for two weeks. New papers, Bill 1851.
Bill 1851, Resolution Approving a Conditional Use Application Under the Pittsburgh Code Title 9, Zoning, Article 5, Chapter 911, Section 911.04, Point A, Point 64, to the Neighborhood Academy Property Owner for Authorization to Construct Additions to a School, Elementary or Secondary Use at 709 North Aiken Avenue, Parcel 81 S 63, Zoned Single-Unit Detached Residential, Low Density, 10th Ward, Council District Number 9.
Motion to hold for municipal public hearing.
Second.
Discussion. Seeing none, all those in favor of a public hearing, please indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Bill will be held for a public hearing. Looks like it is scheduled for June 24th. That moves us on to Innovation, Performance, and Asset Management and Technology Committee chaired by Councilwoman Gross.
New papers, Bill 1847, Resolution Providing for the Issuance of a Warrant in Favor of RPC Video in the Amount of $6,198 to Extend the City Channel Control Room Video Switcher Warranty by One Year.
Motion to approve.
Second.
Discussion.
Discussion. Councilperson Sharland.
I think we have some folks here to talk about this. Just don't get to call Finer up to the table too often.
Yeah, we don't ever get to call him up to the table. What are we going to do? We just got asked to give him a hand.
Yeah.
This really isn't his 6,000, is it?
Would you like to introduce yourself?
David Finer, Communication Technology Manager, Department of Innovation and Performance.
Sylvia Harris, Acting Director, Department of Innovation and Performance.
I was just curious what this was about.
So the video switcher in our control room up on the ninth floor, this is a one-year warranty extension. It's an item we purchased two years ago. This is just a simple warranty extension.
So I didn't really call you to the table about the $6,000 bill. I just wanted to take a moment to thank City Channel for all the fantastic work that you guys do. You're a great partner for my office and wanted to take a moment to just applaud you and all the hard, the team around you, so.
Did you hear that?
I did, thank you.
Thank you for using the microphone.
Thank you for being here.
Any further discussion?
Nope.
I thought we were going to give you a hard time.
Seeing none, all those in favor of Bill 1847, please indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Affirmative recommendation. That moves us on to the final committee of the day, Intergovernmental and Educational Affairs Committee chaired by Councilman Mosley, Bill 1854.
New papers, Bill 1854, Resolution Establishing a Task Force on Sustainable Funding for the Pittsburgh Land Bank to Develop Recommendations for Long-Term Financial Stability.
Motion to approve, discussion?
Second.
Is there a second?
Second.
Second. The discussion, Councilman Wilson.
All right, thank you. And then as you see before you, there is a yellow document and it's just a small, I believe a small amendment. So I'd like to amend the bill and then talk about the complete bill. So motion to amend.
Second.
All those in favor of, is there a discussion on the motion to amend? Seeing none, all those in favor of amending Bill 1854, please indicate by saying aye.
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 I'm sorry, I'd like to, if you don't mind Chair, I'd like to correct, I'd like to just amend by substitution.
Second.
Certainly. So we can.
I withdraw my motion to amend.
Thank you. And if you'd like to make a motion to amend by substitution.
Yeah, then a motion to amend by substitution.
Second.
Is there a second?
Second.
Second.
Is there discussion on the motion to amend by substitution? Seeing none, all those in favor of amending Bill 1854 by substitution, please indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. So bill is amended, is there discussion on the bill, Councilman Wilson?
Yes, thank you Chair. So, you know, there's no secret, I'll also save the best for last here, you know, this bill. This is a short agenda, but for me, it's a pretty important piece of legislation that I'm putting forward here because just representing a district that literally there is a house that's about to fall into the street in Spring Garden and been working with PLI to contact the owner, I mean, this is, this is an issue all across Pittsburgh where we have, we're spending so much money on DEMO, we're spending so much money on, you know, keeping up with empty lots. There is a lot to do in our neighborhoods to make sure that, you know, on the Children's Walk to School Day that PPS has, that they don't have to walk through, they don't have to walk past all these vacant property, implanted property. So in order to do that, we need money. You know, we need money and we need a good tool. The Land Bank is a great tool. We all celebrate the work that the Land Bank does and to continue that past 2026, we're going to need some funding. And so I believe on the city side, what we can do is figure out what, if any, funding we can, you know, support in the budget or we can create some sort of other new revenue that, you know, other cities, other landbanks have to, you know, support this type of entity. And that's why I think, you know, forming a task work is, task force is essential and that is, it's comprised, the amendment does the one thing, which it separates, you know, a core, it identifies a core of the committee, of the task force, and then that, that core will then, you know, invite others that are in the full task force throughout time and that time period will be within 90 days. So we want to wrap this all up in 90 days so we can literally turn around and make recommendations to the, you know, for the draft, you know, for the first draft or hopefully the final draft of the budget to come over with something, you know, including Land Bank funding. So we had a great moment in time when we didn't have to, you know, worry about this because there was so much COVID relief money that came in, $10 million and then.
Till we raided it.
Yeah, it was reduced two times and so I just want to make sure that we're not only recognizing the great work that the Land Bank does, I know we have Sally Stedman here that does great work at the Land Bank, but, you know, just to make sure that we're funding this and really getting this to be a sustainable tool that we can continually rely on. So I just, you know, appreciate all the support of, of the co-sponsors and, and appreciate any additional support from council to make sure that this is, you know, a conversation that is welcomed and, you know, as you can see, it's in the task force, it's trying to welcome a lot of different parties together so we can have this robust conversation.
I don't know, do I raise my hand? I don't know what to do.
Thank you Chair.
Thank you, Councilman Coghill.
Ah, good, she sees. Thank you, Madam Chair.
Just feel free to speak up in this scenario, just feel free to speak up if you'd like to go into extra testing.
Good deal, good deal, good deal, thank you. Yeah, I guess interrogatory with Councilman Wilson is just simply, so this is a task force of how many people do you have that decide?
I believe nine.
Okay.
So I can quickly name them here, so it's.
Yeah, that's okay.
Yeah, well, I'll name the whole and then I was going to say that, yeah, so there's, there's nine and that includes people from the Land Bank, that includes Finance and Law, our, our Budget Director includes designee, designee from the mayor, from the URA, from city planning, so OMB has a spot as well and then the core is made up of a, you know, a group of four.
Right, well, I appreciate you thinking about this, you know, we've talked about this before. We know that we did draw back money from the original 10 million. We know the importance and the value as to what great work that Sally has been doing at the Land Bank and I'm committed to whether it's a hard decision as to where to get this money from or an easy one, that's I guess up to the task force to come back with recommendations, but yeah, I'm fully committed to, you know, funding, finding a way to fund the Land Bank moving forward, it's a necessity, no question about it, so thanks for your work. Instead of waiting till that time comes and pressing the panic button, it's good to be on it, thanks.
Right, yeah, I appreciate that.
Thank you. Further discussion?
Yeah.
Councilmember Warwick.
Yeah, thanks. I guess I'm, I'm curious, just in other cities, oh, in, are there other cities where, I mean, is there, could there ever been, I know it's not yet, but you know, over the years where the Land Bank could become like self-sustaining, like create, like, you know what I mean? Like, like flipping houses itself, basically, you know?
Yeah, I mean, that, I don't believe that there is a motto out there that solely, you know, says that all the money, all the money that the Land Bank can't create on its own, like through tax revenue or, you know, or just the, I'm sorry, the sale of the house or some sort of agreement where they get tax revenue over a certain amount of time because, because that's a part of what the Land Bank can do in Pennsylvania, they can get, you know, five year, when they put something back in the tax rolls, they can get, once this agreement, hopefully this agreement will have this in this, in here, where they, we can do five years, half of those taxes will go back to the Land Bank. So that is a possibility, but that's why I hope to incorporate in this discussion is just the, you know, just the maximum amount that the Land Bank could, you know, receive on its own and what we would have to add to it. So it's really, yeah, it's trying to understand that part and that's why, you know, involve people from the Land Bank, people from real estate, everyone be part of that conversation to figure out, yeah, just what that base is, like what the base amount is that's coming in and then what we'd have to add to it.
Okay.
Or who someone would have to add to it to make it work.
Any further discussion, round one?
Also Sally's here, if she could say more eloquently than I could if you wanted to.
I'd like to talk about it.
Sally, you want to come up to?
Who's she?
Councilwoman Kail Smith, and last Councilmember Warwick, were you still?
I'm sorry.
Seeking answers?
Oh, did you want to elaborate on?
Sure.
What the councilman said, sure.
Sure. This is Sally Stedman, Acting Director of the Pittsburgh Land Bank. The Pittsburgh Land Bank, and I, I think you could say this for any land bank, it will never be possible for the land bank to be 100% sustained by our sales. There's a few different reasons for that. One, we are an affordable housing pipeline and so it's important that we can provide that property as cheaply as possible so that our nonprofits and CDCs can be successful in their projects, especially when there are already massive subsidies going into those projects to make them successful. But it's also part of our mission to take property that has been vacant and abandoned and return it to the tax rolls and even when we're selling that back to the market directly, because so much of our inventory has been sitting for a long time and is often in parts of town where you end up with a, with a gap in, in financing, where if we don't put some funding into that property or sell it at a deep discount, it's not possible for that buyer to get enough funding to complete the rehab. So if you have a, a market where the property values on average are $150,000 and a house that's been sitting for five years is going to take $200,000 to rehab, I'd say that's a pretty standard equation that we see across the board. So we always need more funding upfront to get those properties back to the tax rolls. The good news is there could be a future where we work ourselves out of the need for a land bank at all if we make that upfront investment and that investment pays off in the long term because if we prevent that structure from ending up on the DEMO list, we, the taxpayers, are not paying for the property to be torn down and we've, we've kept a house standing where someone will come occupy it and continue to pay taxes for many decades and we may not see a house come back to that property, to that vacant lot for, you know, decades, if, if not ever, because it can be so difficult to rebuild. So there's, there's long-term sustainability that will come across the board, but it's, it's high, we will, it will be almost impossible for us to ever be sustainable just from those sales alone.
Got it.
Councilwoman Kail Smith.
Thank you, Chairperson. So there's a couple of things, I sent you an email about the properties in Elliot, could you talk about those a little bit?
The ones that we're working on to send to Pittsburgh Housing Development Corporation or all, all the vacant properties in Elliot.
Well, all of them, I'm trying to understand how you chose to sell them to somebody, I would, I'd like to know a little bit about the process and who's making these determinations and, and are you working with the community group because they don't know a lot about what's going on. I don't want people, this is what I feared, that people would get on the Land Bank, they'd make decisions for our community and not work with the residents that actually live in those neighborhoods and so, and I see it happening. So I'll be honest with you, I've always had concerns about the Land Bank, that's why I took myself off it and now I'm starting to have concerns again and I'm seeing some of the properties that, there's a lot of people, a lot of connections internally with different people and I'm seeing properties in our district that are, people are working without permits and all sorts of things are happening and then people are saying that there's, you know, that the community has all kinds of questions and concerns about things that they're hearing is going to happen at the properties. So I have a lot of issues, period, about what's happening with the Land Bank, number one, but I want to know what the process is, like when you, when you do get properties, how you determine who's going, who you're going to sell them to?
Yeah, absolutely and, and I apologize, I'm, I'm surprised to hear that because, so the majority of property that we've processed so far, we are identifying a buyer upfront. It's usually a community development corporation or a nonprofit. In the case of this batch of five properties in Elliot, it's the Pittsburgh Housing Development Corporation, they're a nonprofit that does affordable home rehabs.
Who's on that, who owns it, who's connected to that?
That's Richard Snipe is the executive director.
Yeah, so I know Richard and I trust Richard, he's done a great job in our district.
Yes, and so the process for those homes, as I understand it, is PHDC met with you to present their plans for the property.
He's met with the community too, yeah.
And so, and they're, you were generally supportive of the properties being purchased and rehabbed to be sold as affordable homes.
But who's the nonprofit that's buying the one house in Elliot, that there's people squatting and you sent an email?
Pittsburgh Housing Development Corporation.
That is Richard?
Yes.
Okay.
Yes, his organization requested those and is ultimately going to be purchasing them.
And I'll be honest, he's probably the only person I trust around housing issues because he always does what he says he's going to do and he does an amazing job, but he's retiring. So, so I just, I have a lot of concerns about the whole, the whole process.
So we.
In this part, for this part, for the, for the actual task force that you're coming up with or whatever, is that what it's called, task force? Is there criteria for them to serve? Do you want to interrogate, is that okay, Madam Chair? Do we have an interrogatory? Okay.
Yes, please.
Yeah, I wrote, thank you Chair, I wrote the bill to include everyone that should be involved in a conversation about sustainable funding for a land bank. So the task force is solely focused on funding, not getting into the bylaws and, and the rules of Land Bank, just that, you know, a sustainable funding source past 2026.
So who do you consider are the people that should be involved?
For funding, I involve OMB.
I can't see.
Yeah, yeah, I'll, I'll read them out, so that's the.
I just want to know before I vote.
Land Bank, Chair of Land Bank, the Treasurer of the Land Bank, the Acting Director of the Land Bank, the person, our Chair, the Committee of Finance and Law, the Representative from the Mayor's Office to be designated by the Mayor, Representative from the URA, designated by the URA, Representative from City Planning, Representative from our Budget Director and also OMB, a member from, I'm sorry, a designee from OMB. So everyone just.
That's pretty much running it now.
Oh, I'm sorry, what's that?
Everybody that's pretty much running it now.
No, no, there's, there's several entities that don't have any.
Yeah, with a few exceptions.
Involved in it. Everyone that I believe can be the best suited to work with in terms of the city's budget and to understand, this is to give recommendations to council.
And who do you see funding this? Do you see foundations controlling our land? I mean, who do you see funding this?
That's why I want to have these conversations.
Yeah, I would like to, we'll come back to council before?
This is going to come back to council with several recommendations in 90 days.
Okay.
This isn't legislation that does anything other than get, form a task force and then give recommendations to council and the Mayor's Office in terms of.
Okay, and I know you're doing good work and I just, I, I know that you're doing, trying to the best you can and I do appreciate that you make sure that I'm somewhat kept in the loop, but I do have a lot of concerns about what's happening in my district, especially in the houses for Elliot, I'm waiting to see something happen there and I, and I know that there are some things happening, but I want to see more happen. And I'd like to see these kind of projects happen all over the city, which is why the funding is so important, but I also don't want foundations controlling our land and I don't want certain developers just controlling our land, I want to make sure that these are people that are invested in the neighborhoods, controlling the land that they, that they pay for, so.
Absolutely.
So that's it for me, thank you.
Thank you, Councilperson Sharland.
Yeah, so I am excited to see this, I know Councilman, you and I talked about this a while ago and I'm glad that this is something that we're, we're bringing forward here. I think the. And I'm glad that this is something that we're, we're bringing forward here. I think the, you know, to me, one of the most important functions that we can have as a city and related agencies is our ability to get property back onto the tax rolls. And um, the land bank has, has been able to, to do remarkable work in my district so far. We'd like to supercharge it and get it to do more. So I, I'm thankful that this is uh, hopefully not just an opportunity to see how it can be sustainable, but how we can, can grow the land bank and uh, make it more effective because it's something that pays for itself in the long run, you know? When we put these dollars back in to the tax rolls, we don't have to pay for the upkeep, we don't have to pay for demolition. We don't have to pay for the public safety components that often go with these dilapidated properties. It is the number one issue when I uh have door knocked through my neighborhood that people in the Hilltop want to talk to me about is vacant property. What are you doing with this vacant property? I don't, I don't want to live here anymore because I'm tired of living next to these vacant properties here. So it is, you know, an unbelievable return on investment and I'm glad that this is something that we are uh, we're, we're pushing forward here. I, I think that Councilwoman Wilson, you've really become the champion of the land bank, uh, kind of land bank Bobby over there. But the but no, I mean, I, I, I can't this is, this is the, the most, one of the most important things that we can do here. And I'm excited to see what the recommendations come back. Thank you.
Thank you. Any further discussion first round?
I do, Madam. Oh, I already went first round, I think. I think I did first round.
Oh, okay. I'll, I'll just say real quickly for my part and then we'll come back to you on second round. That the, the part of the reason I signed on as a co-sponsor of this is because it's, I just know, I know how things get stalled, not for any malicious reason, but you know, we saw the land bank stall in its, um, after it was informed for many, many years because it just wasn't prioritized. And now we're prioritizing it and it's really up and going, but to be able to prioritize finding a sustainable funding model. You know, people like to say, oh, there are too many task forces and boards and this and that. But like that is the way that you get a group of people focusing in on a certain topic. And if you're putting heads together who have different perspectives, different ideas to discuss nothing but how to make the, the, the land bank financially viable and sustainable and to, you know, take the time together to apply for the grants, to look at other models. I think that's what's needed right now. So I'm really grateful to Councilwoman Wilson for his leadership and for prioritizing this. And ensuring that it's the priority of, of, you know, the people who will be serving on the task force. So thank you. I will move on to second round, Councilman Coghill.
Thank you, Madam Chair. Um, I would like to be added as a co-sponsor, please. Ashley. And uh, the, and the question I have for, for you, Sally, was how do you come across your properties? I mean, you know, I know we have a real estate division with Jennifer Gola and, you know, and Erin. But I, I still don't know how properties come into their hands. I think those become like tax delinquent and they just fall in their hands. But how do you, do you dictate and search and say this property is ripe for the land bank? Or explain to me like how you end up with the properties you have?
That's a great question, Councilman Coghill. So uh, when I started at the land bank, I think one of the great benefits of, of um having the land bank at the URA is that um we, there had already been, we've had a process for a long time for community development corporations to request tax delinquent property, acquire it and use it for primarily affordable housing projects, but other types of projects as well. And so one of the first things I did when I started at the land bank was to take over that process, which was required via the tri-party cooperation agreement. And we started working with those CDCs that have already traditionally been using that treasure sale process. So they, um, and we uh created a map for them. And we gave them a lot more data and information to make smarter decisions about what property they were requesting. But we would take those requests uh and, and, and put those through the treasure sale. So that was the, the first iteration of where those came from. Um, and then we had
So, so you look for treasure sales?
Um, yes. So we, so with the CDCs, we worked with them to identify properties that fit uh their projects that we then placed in the treasure sale.
For instance, like City of Bridges, they might say, well, this is a perfect little property for us to come in and make affordable home.
Exactly.
And you aggressively go after that property through our real estate division or?
Right. Yes. Right now, it's been either we had, we've, we put a, a round of properties through treasure sale in 2023. Or now, on the other hand, we, we will have nonprofit CDCs, other organizations, Habitat for Humanity would be a good example. We kind of share a front door with, with the URA. And so we are contacted or they're contacted, contacting property inquiries at the URA. And we're having a conversation with them about what's in the city's inventory, what's in the URA's inventory.
So, so surely like a pot of properties and you kind of dictate, like this one fits in with the land bank and what we can do? And this one maybe not so, or?
Exactly. Yes.
Understood, understood.
And I think that is working well to get started. And, you know, I think that, and again, with more funding and resources, we can be even more proactive and help remove additional barriers and work with, with people that aren't already kind of plugged into that uh system.
Right. And you know, as Councilwoman Warwick was saying, and I think I've asked you the same question, I thought, well, can't you self-sustain yourself? But if you're just focusing, are you, is your sole focus on affordable housing? I mean, can you not go market rate? Or why can't we just sell to anybody?
I think to start out, because we also had to learn our own processes and, and work out, you know, all the challenges and kinks and bugs. And there's still lots of work to do there as well. We wanted to make sure we had experienced partners that were waiting at the end of that process to purchase the property. So that was, that's been, I think what we, this whole ecosystem, everyone's been a lot more comfortable with this idea. We're finding the buyer upfront. We know that buyer is going to be prepared and waiting for us at the end of that nine months. And I think that the next iteration of the land bank must move towards being able to make other kinds of sales.
Well, I would like to see that, honestly, you know, and I feel like it's maybe why you're not in my neighborhoods a, a great deal.
Exactly. No, that's exact, that is 100% it. Yes.
Got it.
That is, that is 100% why.
Yeah, I'd like to see you, you know, branch out beyond just affordable housing units because then maybe there's a profit to be made, even if it goes into our coffers. And as Councilwoman Charlin was saying, then it's still self-sustaining, even though not in black and white on your spreadsheet. But, you know, for the city saving money by getting these properties back on a tax roll, it's a lot easier to justify when Mr. Wilson comes back and says, we're going to take the money from here. But, you know, because it's, it is probably revenue neutral, at least I would open the end. Not in affordable housing, I don't believe, because we're basically giving them to City of Bridges and people who are going to do something with them, which is, which is great, great for affordable housing. But it's not great, it's great to get them back on the tax roll, but
Yeah. And it's not a zero-sum game. We can do it all. And it's all good for the city and those projects. And um, yeah, and I'm glad that Councilwoman Charlin mentioned that because, yeah, short term, we are not, we can't be sustainable, but it is one of the most sustainable tools that you can invest in in terms of long-term revenue.
Yeah, we get a return on it, even if you don't see it on your bottom line, you know, the city sees a return just in the tax revenue alone, you know, so.
Absolutely.
You know, cost it for us to demo a property or whatever it may be. So you said, where were we at, 140?
We have about 150 in the pipeline. 90 of those are in our inventory.
Okay, gotcha. We're still not in the fourth district, though, right?
Um, we don't, but I did meet with the Carrick Community Council, which I, I, I hope you got to hear about our, our, our meeting at the Carrick Community Council. So we're, we are in conversation.
Plenty of properties in the fourth district that could qualify, you know?
Yes, yes.
I see them all the time. I, it's, it's hard to tell if it's privately owned, you know, you go by, it's sometimes falling to pieces. But um, but I take it that you will identify hopefully some properties in my district. And whether we get them on an affordable housing docket or market rate, doesn't matter to me, honestly. I, you know, obviously we're, everybody's talking about affordable housing crisis. That's all great, good. But, you know, we just want to see a move, you know? If somebody wants to buy at a market rate, let them go at market rate, right? Okay. Thanks, Sally. I, I really appreciate it. You're doing a great job. And again, uh, I'm committed to paying for whatever we need in the future to keep you up and running since you've shown such great progress. So, thanks.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Thank you. Any further discussion, second round?
Yes, Chair.
Please proceed.
I just wanted to ask, I know the answer, but I would like to hear from you because I think that's a good, there were some good questions asked earlier. Why would we work, why would the land bank work with other entities like PHDC, URA? What's, what's the benefit to them? Why would they work with us versus, you know, someone else?
Yeah. I mean, I think the short answer is we can't do it alone. Like the land bank is a specific tool to clear, um, clear away back taxes, liens and encumbrances, right? That's, that is the big invisible barrier of what's in the city's inventory and our larger vacant and abandoned inventory throughout the city. It's the taxes, liens and encumbrances and clouded title.
But how were they doing that before the 10 million, before, well, what was it, three and a half it ended up being?
Uh, before the land bank, you
From covert relief funds? Before it was funded, yeah. What was PHDC doing before that?
That everyone was using the treasure sale, primarily using the treasure sale process, purchasing through the city, which required property to be exposed at the treasure sale and which also uh really incentivizes uh property to sit for a long time because you want it to have a lot of back taxes so that when it goes to treasure sale, no one is incentivized to buy it so it can make it to that CDC. But then the problem there is that we're getting the worst-conditioned properties into our affordable housing pipeline. And we can't access properties that might, we know are dead-end vacant and abandoned, but have only been sitting tax delinquent for three years. And so ultimately, we'll be able to open that pathway up with the um ICA and the use of the sheriff's sale. Um, and so we, we offer a, a better tool for those entities to be able to access.
The land bank's tool was faster, clearing title, waiving, waiving um back taxes? And then
Exactly.
And then it also, I'm also hearing that it's um, uh, what's the other one? The time, the back taxes, and then also that property could go to a higher bidder before it would go to
Exactly.
If we kept that, if they kept their old process, it wouldn't immediately go to, to PHDC, it would go to the highest bidder.
That is exactly right.
Which is totally cuts out the community.
Right.
Yeah. So here, we at least have this opportunity, even though I mean, I'll be perfect and we can continue to work on it. We, we have an opportunity here at the land bank to make it the best tool possible.
Yeah, that's exactly right.
Okay.
Good reminder.
Thanks for
Yeah.
Okay, thank you. No further questions.
Thank you. Any further discussion?
Yeah, I, I do.
Councilwoman Kelsner.
Thank you. Um, I just want to make sure that you do work with the um community group that, you know, because they've had a lot of questions about some of the thing, some of the properties. And you and I did talk about taking some of the properties and maybe trying to create something like the housing co-op. And I really think that's where we need to be working together with the land bank, URA. And I, I keep saying we need a Department of Economic Development is what we need in the city. So everybody's working together under one umbrella. I'm actually working on some legislation for it. But um, I think that way we can make sure that we're doing the things we need to do and people not living next to properties that are falling down for 30 years or 40 years or whatever it is. But I um also think that um, I also think that the community has to be part of that, that process. But I do have concerns about any one entity or one group funding the land bank because it's, it's I remember when I first started getting involved in the community, there was a woman, Ms. Nixon, I don't know if you remember, Alice Nixon from Ferrywood. And she used to say, every time we, we talk about something, she'd say, it's a land use issue, honey. They want the land, they want the land. And she was right. I mean, I, I didn't realize it back then, but now years later, I realize, boy, was she ever right. I wish she were living today so I could tell her I learned the lesson. But um, for me, I want to make sure that whatever we do, I do want to see the houses down. I do want to see some, not only affordability, but in our district, as I mentioned, there's a housing study that says we need market rate to stabilize our area. So I want to make sure that you're working, we're working together for what's in the best interest of each neighborhood, each district, each neighborhood, and not just one citywide plan because it's not a cookie cutter plan. You know, everybody needs something different. So maybe Bobby can get me some developers over there. All right, that's it.
Yeah, and I
Thank you.
Oh, I had the, some residents invite me to the June 18th Elliott Community Council meeting. So I'm really excited to
Okay. I asked them to invite you because they have a lot of questions about the property. And one of them is the one that you were just talking about with the, the email that we're on. So I really think that would be good.
Yeah. Oh, yeah, really looking forward to it. Can't wait to get back, back to Elliott. It's been a while.
Good, yeah. And we have a lot in Sheridan, too. I mean, there's some in Elliott, but you know, there's a lot of people investing and doing things in Elliott. But Sheridan still has some of the same properties that were there, you know, 20 years before I ever got elected. And, and they're overgrown and you don't even know they're there unless you know they're there, you know what I mean? So I'd like to see us do more about those.
Me too.
Yeah. Thank you. Thank you, thank you. But I want to see the housing co-op expand.
Sounds great.
That's what I want. That's it. Thank you, Madam Chair.
Further discussion?
Madam Chair, this would be round three for me. If anybody else left for round two, I'll be quick, I promise. But uh, Councilwoman Wilson just reminded me of, you know, I think he explained it pretty well as to what did we do beforehand and what do you do differently now? I know because I've been through the process, right? Um, I had to hire an attorney and it cost me, I want to say, this is 10 years ago, $5,000. He or she went out, contacted all heirs and, you know, made sure everybody in that pipeline, that family line, you know, this is somebody we don't, that died and there is no heir to the property, basically, it's sitting there, back taxes. That process went like this. Um, then we went to the sheriff's sale, okay? And then at the sheriff's sale, now I was already invested $5,000 on my own money, right? I was guaranteed that money back if I didn't buy that property. Whoever buys that property had to pay me that money back, right? Which is the way it worked on both two or three instances that I did it. So, so, so my question is, what's different with you is, now, there was an up-sell price, I guess they called it. So it was all the money that that person owed in taxes and the water company and, you know, other utilities, I think, that were all included in there. And they added up to, say, $40,000 for this one particular property. That's where the price started. And if nobody purchased it or if nobody was willing to buy, now I knew that price going in, right? I put up my five just to get it through the system, get it to the point where we get bid on it. Um, if I were going to get it for that cost of the taxes and whatever else they owed on that property, and I knew that going into it. I, the person outbid me, I wasn't willing to pay what, whatever the person did. So the difference is, we don't have to pay those taxes back because you have an agreement with the school district and the county. So you're getting it basically for free.
Yeah, that's, that's exact, well, for the cost of the sale. So I would say it'll cost us between 2,500 to 5,000 on average to pay for the paperwork, the time it takes to send out the sheriff, you know, that kind of thing.
Got it. So that's, that's the tricock. Is that, I'm, I'm just really trying to make sure I got a full understanding. That's why I'm asking these questions and I
Yes. And I, I mean, I could talk, you know, I will, I will never pass up an opportunity to nerd out about
On this in my office after if you want to, but
Yeah, we're happy to talk through, but I'm, I'm glad you bring it up because I think, you know, that process is, is complex.
Still just, all right, is it still, if I wanted to do that, I could still do that.
Oh, absolutely, yes. And anyone can, an individual can apply to put something into treasure sale or sheriff's sale. But, but ultimately, unless you do it for a living, it is, it is a complex process. It can be even hard to find an attorney that knows how to do a quiet title action and a sheriff's sale. Um, and, and, and that does not give us enough, um, we, we can't get through our inventory fast enough. And on the sheriff's sale side, once a property becomes more tax delinquent than the value of the property, you can't take it through sheriff's sale because you're not going to pay $40,000 at sheriff's sale for a house that's going to assess it 20,000. And so, and, and we're not the only municipality stuck in that position. You, it, it becomes unusable when you let the taxes go for too long. Um, so that's the one benefit of the treasure sales, the city acquires it at the end of the
Okay. So, so back to a previous question, and that's kind of why I'm bringing this up. Once you clear it with the three taxing bodies, and also like water companies, you have to deal with them? You have to deal with utilities, too?
Yes.
And they also forgive?
Yeah. PWSA is the only utility that liens and we have an agreement with them where they
Okay.
uh, you know, evaluate and waive um our, our liens as we, as we request.
And so far, every property that we've done has been turned over to um a nonprofit that's doing affordable housing?
Uh, for the most part, yes. Uh, there's some small businesses in there, too.
We're giving it to them.
They pay our, our cost to process the property.
So 5,000 bucks maybe.
Yeah. Well, 7,500 for a lot, 10,000 for a structure.
So we are leaving money on the table there. I mean, by going affordable, I know affordable is important, but, you know, um, again, just pointing out, just instances I've been through, some you know, um, again, just pointing out, just instances I've been through, somebody spent $50,000 for that house. So you could require it, you legally are allowed to require it, forgive all the taxes that comes with the land bank, and then we could sell it outright if we wanted to.
Absolutely, yes.
Well, you could be self-sustaining if, I believe, if we went down that road, honestly, right? I mean, depends on how many properties we have, I guess, but it's just, uh, you know, interesting to we're, we're giving them away, because we want affordable housing, and we know that these people are gonna come in and do the right thing, instead of just selling them to the general public. But if we sold them to the general public and you, and if we profited $40,000 on it, where would that money go?
It stays with the land bank, so we do have, there, there are absolutely opportunities to bring revenue in. I just want to make sure we all understand that that's never gonna cover 100% of our operating costs. So we have, we have more revenues than most to make sure that money returns back to us, but
Yeah, I understand, I understand, but I, I feel like we're leaving money out there on the table, I, I agree. You know, we're trying to fight this affordable housing crisis, and it's, it's a great vehicle for that, but same time, we're leaving a lot of money out there on the table, we really are.
Yeah, and I think uh, when we have property that is in really rough condition, it's not, it's not so bad it needs to be torn down yet, but it's getting really close. That's not necessarily the best house to put into the affordable housing pipeline. We want better quality houses that need less subsidy. So when we open up all those pipelines, that really helps move all property-
Careful as to what you take.
Yeah, exactly, exactly.
Okay, thanks.
I don't, we could go on forever, really bad.
The Councilwoman Warwick, I, I really feel like there's a way you could, not self-sustain, at least not for the next two to five years, but eventually, I feel like you can be self-sustained if we do it, right? Because properties come up all the time, it's not like we're gonna run out. There, there's gonna be ones that are now, there's people are living in, 10 years from now, they're abandoned and, and up for auction again.
Yes, no, that's-
Endless supply, is what I'm saying, right? Pretty much.
Let's hope, but it, it is endless, but it's shrinking.
Down, where it's manageable, but yeah, okay, no, thanks Sally.
Thank you. Any further discussion? Seeing none. All those in favor of Bill 1854, please indicate by saying, as amended, please indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Affirmative recommendation. That brings us to the end of our council meeting agenda. And we have a couple of announcements. Next week, council will hold their regular meeting on Tuesday, June 3rd, and standing committees meeting on Wednesday, June 4th, both at 10 a.m. Back to a regular week. To register to speak at these meetings and hearings, please fill out the sign-up form on the council meeting webpage by the deadline, and you may also call the clerk's office at 412-255-2138. Is there anything from members? Seeing none, I'll take a motion to excuse the absent members, approve the minutes and adjourn the meeting.
So moved, second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Aye, meeting is adjourned.